Okay, so we've called a meeting to order here on January 18th of 2022 at seven o'clock.
Keep going.
And we have approval of agenda, approval of minutes for January 4th, 2022. And then discussion of property cleanup, public comment, and then adjourn. So I'll look for a motion to...
Um, I just wanted to say, but I was a little surprised in the minutes. It says, "Megan Randall says, write the bylaws." Megan Randall says, and I think what I was saying was, "We've been tasked to write a bylaws here. Let's get going and do it." It's kind of, that the select board had suggested that we write a bylaw, as I understand it. But it doesn't say that in the minutes, so I just wanted to clarify. But other than that, I moved that we accept them.
So be it.
There's a motion for agenda, approval of agenda.
Oh, the agenda, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. You said you'd... Let me go over that.
Yeah, I just put in there somewhere that the select board had tasked us with writing bylaws. And I was just like, "Let's do it." In my usual impatient fashion. Is Michelle Peckroll on the...
She's generally on.
Yeah, she's not on.
Yeah.
Makes it.
I love your glasses. They're really cool.
Looking different.
Is Brian on too, or no?
I sent Brian with the next.
We have enough.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got five.
Yeah, we got five of us, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move the motion that we accept the meetings of the meeting.
Let's see it. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, here.
Stand.
And I'm standing.
So enough people to...
Yeah, you had enough people anyway.
We don't have a lot up there. Um, okay. So, the property cleanup. And one of the things we discussed, and thank you for throwing up tonight, that's...
Well, that's not a problem.
We appreciate it. We're trying to get some feedback. And Mike Gardner's on, I see. Looks like he's...
He's supposed to be. Yeah, yeah.
You did Mike Gardner, that's something.
So basically, um, what we're trying to do is, is come up with some kind of, a ordinance or some sort that we can start to try to clean up some of the properties in town in a way, some way, shape, or form. It's a lot to do to get something in place. Been a lot of years, people have tried and hasn't gone anywhere. So I guess our attempt is to try to do this again, but in a little bit different process. Where we need to, we know that we need to have something written in the bylaws first. So we have to put something together.
We do have something written in the bylaws. We have perfectly good trash ordinance, a trash bylaw. Thing of it is, it's on page, it's on number 8.8.6. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead and see what, show what that...
And it says, "No refuse shall be dumped upon any part of the lot and outside the building." Or they're talking, it's a zoning ordinance, I mean zoning bylaw. Of buildings constructed thereon. "Storage of refusés outside buildings," do you want me to take, "shall be completely, shall be in completely enclosed containers, secure from animals, screened from view from public ways and adjoining properties, and located to minimize fire hazards and to prevent threats to water quality in the event of container failure." So, and there's also lots of laws from the Vermont statutes that, that also govern, you know, it's the enforcement that's the hard part.
That's exactly it. Enforcement.
So, so my, um, looking into this and talking, I talked to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And they said, and also to, to a lawyer, and they both told me there's really a big difference between an ordinance and a bylaw. So we, as a, as a planning commission, you know, it's our job to write bylaws. It's not our job to write ordinances. But that's okay. Here we are, anyway. And, uh, that, an ordinance can be enforced by ticketing and the, and the, you know, like, Fred and, and Mike, as health officer and zoning administrator, could enforce them without having to go to court. So that's, you know, the, the difference. But to, if you write a, what happened to us with that, at other times, what has happened to the town is that if you write a bylaw curtailing someone's rights, or curtailing what they've already done for years on that property, that's considered a taking and which means that you're taking their rights away from them. So, so you can't do it. It's unenforced, and that's why we lost in court. So, um, so, an ordinance is easier to enforce and, um, and I think we would go around that, the problem of, uh, you know, a taking, taking somebody's rights away from them.
Beyond, beyond writing bylaws and ordinances, we also discussed incentive, incentivizing people to just...
And, you know, and everything, everyone...
Is it difficult? Why is it difficult? Find out why it's difficult.
Right.
Well, yeah, is it money always, you know, because, because...
Well, I, I...
Compost?
You invited me here, Fred. I think that actually it probably has a lot to do with it.
Yeah.
I think, I think that the fact that you've got to, they have to pay to get, get rid of stuff. And I think a lot of people just don't really want to do that. You know, plus there's a lot of lazy bastards out there, be quite honest, pardon my French, but, you know.
Well, maybe we...
They don't want to do it.
Maybe we shouldn't use, yeah, judgmental words like lazy, because it could be a harder problem. It could be real depression. I mean, it could be mental, mental illness as well as, um, as laziness. I mean laziness is kind of a hard...
I just purchased a property right up the street here. And I'm, and I'm, I'm just south of $800 in dump fees at our transfer station to clean this thing up, and we still haven't got the house I cleaned up.
I know. I've been watching.
We just, it's just...
It's hard. It's a big, big job.
It's extremely difficult, and especially if it's been, if it's been going on for a long time, Megan. It's just really, really, really difficult.
Takes a lot of manpower and, uh, you know, it takes, you know, we had talked last, last meeting about could we possibly get some sort of volunteer crew together? Well, you know, yeah, I mean, I...
Personal property? Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, no, you can't, I mean, I, people, well, I'm panel proud. People were always saying, you know, please, can you clean up these properties? And I'd be saying, "No." You know, that's people's, that's private, that's not our job, we're not supposed to do that. It's not, you know, it's a can of worms, basically. But, um, the possibility of maybe that being some...
You're asking, you're asking us to define what's junk.
Right, right.
I mean...
Well, it's defined very well.
Well, it is.
In, in, in the, uh, in, for, in the sample ordinance that I sent out. But...
Could I possibly get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, there's like...
Yeah, there should be extras right there.
Extras?
Yep.
No, there was a minute sent there.
Yeah, here it's on there.
Okay, okay.
So that comes from Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And, um, it's just fill in the blank.
Arlington's.
Yeah, it's probably the same thing.
The same thing, yeah, to find...
They probably all use the same.
Right, and it, you know, it fits us more than Essex Junction, two, three hours, all using the same words.
Right, so we have to go the way of an ordinance. So really, the, the select board has to do that. We aren't supposed to, that's not our job. We, since we have this sort of fill-in-the-blank thing here, it'd be pretty easy to do it. And I'm not sure about the legality, again, that whole taking question. It seems to me we ought to say something about yard sales and flea markets.
Time limits?
Because, yeah, time limits. You can't have a flea market and then leave the stuff out for two, five, six years.
There was a man before us in the DRB that wanted to do that year round. Next to the Rogers Roost.
Yeah. You turn him back.
Looks like it now.
I know, but he wanted...
Still looks like it.
I know, but he wanted a building that's similar to the Legion's and wanted to have a year-round tag sale.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
He wasn't denied, he had an incomplete, uh...
Yep, incomplete application.
Application, so.
Is this the new person, or the, the one who beat us in court?
No, 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 he didn't beat us in court. We never went to court with him.
So this is the new one?
Yeah, yeah, that's the new place.
Got from Connecticut, more or less.
So, I mean, I, I don't know, what would, if we had an ordinance, if we wrote into the ordinance something like, that I picked up from a, an, a, an ordinance in another state, but it says, said something about, yeah, right? Let me see if I, it said something about, yeah, exactly, like flea markets cannot be up for more than three days. And they might, and then after three days, um, the merchandise must be removed. "Flea markets are less permitted as businesses and indoors. Yard sales and other similar types of outdoor sales shall not be conducted for more than three consecutive days." And then you'd add in that more often than once every six months, or whatever we wanted. And after which time, all evidence of sale and merchandise shall be removed by the closest, you know, the closest subsequent open transfer station day. Attaching, oh, then I added, you know, attaching a free sign to something does not, does not make it okay to leave it out there for, you know, that doesn't...
We discussed a lot about free dumping, okay? Supposing, suppose you gave, you put in an audience, we're gonna say April after March, if this went on the ballot, okay? So we gave you six months to clean up. Plenty of time. And then, uh, then things start to enforce.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's six months is a good generous amount of time to pick up.
That's a summer.
Yeah, so we're talking about, you know, trash bags, uh, real, real stuff.
It's gonna be tough anyway, so.
I mean, there's a lot of bags around, black bags and white bags.
People are leaving it right outside.
Yeah, they don't care anymore.
Up on Route 7, bag up against the trailer, you know.
Yeah.
That, that, that to me is stuff that's...
Piled into pickup truck in the driveway. I'm sorry.
I know, I know. But that, that's creating hats and people that, you know...
It's a health hazard.
It's a health hazard, yes.
Okay, so we can complain about it, but what do we do?
That's what we're trying, that's what we're here for.
And that's what we're trying to figure out.
May I say something about dumping?
Well, that's, that's what we, well, we caught some, some main topics that we were generalizing on. And it was providing a garbage service, some type of thing, that was an idea. Property suggesting or putting out there that property values are going up and down because of the messes or what we see. Looking for incentive, incentives, that kind of stuff, or lessen the burden of costs.
Well, here's where it is. I mean, I just did the, uh, the first two quarter report and stuff. Ronnie got one of them and so forth. And, uh, we have 400, well, 446, I sold a permit the other day. Permit holders, and they get a free dump day. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna allow that for everybody, what's their incentive to, to paying $40 for, for a permit?
Well, let...
Oh, allow me to finish here. So what's, what, what I'm thinking is, you can't, you cannot penalize, you know, the good, the good upstanding people of this town and let the, let the slackers, you know, walk, walk away with, with a freebie. I'm sorry. If it's gonna happen, somehow they, the, the, the properties have to get a lien put against them. I think that the town needs to put liens on them, and I, and I don't mean just the little ones. And I, I mean, they gotta, they gotta nail, you know, for the property owners. If they don't want to do it, then the town goes in and does it. This, this is what I'm saying. Your, your rules have to do that. All right, your rules have to, have to do that. You cannot penalize all the good people in this town. I, I won't, I won't stand for it. I'm saying right now.
How is that a, they would just get more free days. We just set up...
No, 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 you can't do that. No, you can't do that. Everybody goes throw their stuff in there. How, you don't know if they're gonna come from Williamstown or wherever. You know, Bennington, New York, who knows?
Oh, those New Yorkers.
Well, no, this is, you know, you had six months, and then you had a free dump day, but after that, your cost, I know.
I think, I think it's, I think it's still penalizing.
It is. Forty dollars a piece, I'm...
Fred, you pay $40.
Yeah.
I pay $40. And I, and I, yeah.
But it's only under 500 people.
Ronnie pays $40, you know? So you come in there, so we, we pay this and we get a free dump day if we, if we wanna, if we want to use it. Why should these people get it? And, and we've already paid for it.
Why? Because this town looks like heck.
I understand this town looks like heck, but you've got to...
Especially out on Route 7, it's embarrassing.
Certainly it's embarrassing, Megan. I knew that.
But, and I don't think lien on, we, we don't have the kind of, we don't... We take people to court and it just goes nowhere. I mean, I, I, we don't have that kind of...
Well, you need, you need, what you need to do, that is, is write way more stringent, uh, ordinances.
Right.
And I mean, I mean, way, way more stringent ordinances.
Look that one over and then, uh...
I'll take, oh, I certainly will, that's what I wanted to do.
And then we also need to think about the flea market issue.
Well, the flea market issue, I agree with a hundred percent. Because that's, that's what they're getting away with up there in the roost.
You know, that's...
Question I have about the $40 permit, why is it $40? Why does it have to be?
Well, part of, part of that's to cover the high cost of our recycling now, gradually.
So, I mean, the most... If you sell twice as much at $20, you get, still got the same amount of money.
Here's, 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 here's what's happening with, with their stuff. Now, fortunately, cardboard has come down. Because when I got here, we were getting paid for cardboard. Now, I'm a six and a half years ago. All right, I'll be, I'll be here seven years in April. And so what it is now, that, but we were only paying $10, $20 a ton for co-mingle. All right, plus a holly, you have to pay for the holly. Well, now, other, other than uncovered electronics, co-mingle is the most expensive thing. We're paying $154 a ton for it. Okay? And if we didn't increase the price of the, of the, uh, of the permit, we would be stuck. I mean, just really, really stuck. We'd really be behind the eight bolt. Then we'd have to raise all the bag prices up, you know? We've got to cover our costs somehow, try to. I mean, we're not, we're never gonna cover them.
Right.
It's not gonna happen. I mean, just...
Could you have a sliding scale?
No, we, we talked about that before. How, how am I gonna do that?
No, you can't.
Are you, are you a tier one, tier two, tier three? No.
That's, you can't ask people personal questions.
Exactly. I mean, that's...
It's a very...
That's getting, that's getting into some things there.
Tom, did you read in the, uh, the Vermont Digger, I read that, that, um, the, the big main, transfer station or whatever you call it, dump in Vermont, the place where everything goes.
Landfill.
Landfill, landfill.
It's owned by these rubbish people down here.
Yeah.
The only one in the state.
They are, they are running out of room.
All the landfills are, nobody wants to have another landfill. And, and this, this whole thing was, was Act 148, you know, that, that I, I'm governed over everything. You know, and when I come in here, Ronnie, you might remember, when I come in for my job interview back then, I had that act in front of me, and I read it and I knew it when I came in here. And it, it hasn't changed, it has changed slightly, but not significantly. When that was written in 2000, and it was under an effect in 2012, when that was written, "Oh, recycling was making all this money, we're making money, making money, making money." So now, we're not making any money and we're stuck with it. So what are we gonna do with it? I mean, this is, this is how it works.
Well, we gotta, we gotta cut off plastic at the source, for one thing. All these, all these energy companies are all, you know, all the BP and Exxon and all those people, they're, they're divesting from oil and making a big deal about how green they are. And then they're investing in plastic making, you know, in plastic production. We have, I mean, I can remember, over my lifetime, there's more stuff in plastic than there...
Would you ever?
Think 20 years back.
Remember, remember the movie The Graduate?
Yeah.
Plastic, you know, I mean, that was, that was, and that was quite some time ago. But it, it has, it has...
But anyway, so...
You know, so, I mean...
So do we write this ordinance and, and would it, would it pass? Would it be, would it, first of all, I think the town would vote in favor of it. On the whole, I think the numbers would be there.
That's the only way you'll get them to say anything. They're not gonna say anything out, like we're doing. They walk in, they're, they're cutting behind them, and probably they'd vote for anything. They do anyway. They vote for everything that goes.
Because, I'll tell you what the people are doing.
They probably wouldn't.
They're not voting.
But we're still not, you know, finding a way to enforce it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then, but then you're gonna deal with illegal dumping, too.
That's what we're always dealing with.
We're already dealing with it.
Well, yeah, that's what panel proud does.
We're not solving the problem, at all.
Yep, Fred, I should have, I should have compiled last week. I got a tablet that, that Megan and the other people in panel proud are bringing stuff in, plus other folks. They pick it up along the road. I've got a list in my little drawer there, I just write it down, you know, how many bags, how many mattresses and stuff. And I don't get a, a good count from the highway department usually, because they just bring it in and they forget to tell me. You know, mattresses and, and the big stuff and everything. And I've gone out with Joel and picked stuff up, you know? And, you know, of course, those I put down because I'm pretty well aware of them, you know? But, you know, that's...
That's an example of something that shouldn't go out on a yard with a for-sale sign or for a free sign.
Free sign.
I know, yeah, free sign, yeah.
Nobody is...
The free signs, and they let it sit out there.
Yeah.
And they, they let upholstered, upholstered chairs and couches that are already shot, they were sitting in the front.
When you write the ordinance, so I was fiddling with that when, and adding in about the flea market and stuff. But when you write an ordinance, do you say putting a free sign on it does not, whatever the legalists...
Three days, three days, that's it.
I've seen mattresses stay out there.
Same as, same as a flea market, just encompass that right in there.
Leave this stuff right there, especially across the street. I've seen a mattress stay out there for a month.
I'm not, I don't want to question anybody's good intentions, but whenever I see a sign that says free, take my junk, take my junk for me for free. And that's it. Take care of this for us, pretty much.
Well, you know, part of it is, well, it's, you know, this is cute, maybe somebody would want it. I've, I've been guilty of that, and it's hurt. But it has to be cute.
That, that's why four years ago, I put signs, I put signs there at the swap shop. You know, you, you gotta, you, we have to inspect whatever you want to put in there. And people want to put, I mean, they, they see that, well, you're busy, they, they put stuff in there. I can't, I can't jump out of it. Ron's down there, you know, smashing stuff down, and I'm taking money and so forth. I can't go in there. I mean, here a couple of months ago, before it got real cold, yeah, probably late October, early November, we hold five buckets out of there in the, in that backhoe.
Sure.
Dumped through that.
Because it's junk. We've had history after floods and whatever, we've cleaned out the parks, we've done this.
Yeah.
But, but it's a fair, for you and Mike Gardner, in a position where you're the authority, and you come and pick on me, and I say, "What, what are you picking on me for?" This disgust, and this, and there's a million places.
Well, we gotta start some, just tell them you gotta start somewhere. You're it.
You know...
That's what I'd say.
It's your lucky day.
Well...
But I, I liked what Fred said in the last meeting about, you know, approaching people with a...
Excellent.
A soft kind of kindness.
Don't come in with a big authority.
Yeah.
And tell you what I can do and what I can't do.
You know, I mean, we could give you the authority to give people tickets, and that would be in the ordinance. That's how they usually enforce it. And then, but, you know, you can't squeeze blood from a tournament. If it really is money, uh, that's holding people back, then you're not gonna get a $500 fine out of them.
Do you need to have a permit to bring in recycling?
To put, put a lien on the property, whether they own it or rent it or not.
Oh, that's a good question.
It's up to the landlord.
I could tell you being here...
Wait, wait, Fred just asked...
To, to bring in recycling, composting, recycling, cardboard, bottles, cans, do you need a permit?
Pardon?
Do you need a permit?
Yes, you do. Because that's, that's actually very expensive for us.
There's a cost, so...
Very expensive for us, especially, especially the plastic.
I wonder if there's a way, maybe Rebecca could look at some kind of grant money for offsetting that cost or something.
I don't know.
And educate people and encourage them to, to do that. When I've talked, I talked to a couple of trailer park owners about, about the garbage building up. And I talked to them about, you know, the bylaw says you're, you're supposed to cover the garbage and all that stuff. But you can also inform them, they can separate their stuff and they can, you know, get rid of most of their stuff for free. You know, either the park buys a permit for the park and...
Well, if they, if they...
They're authorized to use that.
Were they to do that, I think I'd almost, well, we could discount, we could discount if it's just gonna be for recycling. Only we could discount the price somewhat for, for a unit. However, you know, we, I got, I got guys come in there, you know, and I get five 30 gallons every week.
Well, somebody's got a special...
You're not recycling anything.
That's a color-coded permit for recycling only, composting and recycling. And they come in with other things, you could take them out behind the shed, take care of that. That's what they do, you know?
But see, I got, I got a lot of people that, that take their, they take their trash to work and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Take it to their friend's house. No, I know what you're saying.
They're taking their trash to work. "Oh, recycling only, recycling only," you know?
The good people go out and recycle and the bad ones don't. And listen, after 40 something years of being across the street from the parks, there's some very disgusting people. And I've had stuff out there, put it out there for oil changes, diapers, the whole nine yards. You know, I mean, it's, uh, and they're not all from Pottel.
Yeah.
Nice little ladies from Williamstown, have a little bag, you know? I know, but what, you know what? We're in the unfortunate place to be, New York, Mass, Vermont.
It's a great place.
Oh, no, it's a great place. We're talking about something that somebody does something bad. What do you think we live here for?
No, no, I mean, it's a great, it's great to be in the middle, like...
Why, why are we talking about something like this? Because it's a bad place. That's what I'm talking about, you know, doing something with dogs.
Indian massacre wrote a lot of people come over from New York.
Oh, God, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've, I've, I've heard stories of people saying they were watching these tire, tire guys from New York. They're following them, and they're, they're dodging tires, they're throwing them off the back of the truck and just running back to New York.
There's enough tires at the racetrack in a couple of barns, totally full. I mean...
I can't even get the guys I usually use to come out from Boston to get the stuff up. I got probably four or 500 tires out there. I've been trying since October.
Aren't there a couple of return places that take plastic bottles and give you money for them?
They do, yes.
The state, state is starting to do more with its...
The state, state is starting to do more with recycling now. I was watching one of the, that goes for our final approval, but they upstate did have a thing in that they were trying to make a returnable for the plastics now here in this state where other states have been and were not. So if that happens, that'll be a returnable thing, which is going to be taking some of that out.
They take it in New Hampshire.
The problem, the problem with that is that water bottles, January sixteen, twelve sixteen, half water bottles, they're the most profitable thing to recycle. So if they go into redeemables, they're kind of, they're kind of pulling them out of the recycling somewhat. You know, so now we we got to, you got to pay, you know, five cents, six cents, whatever it's going to be. You know, you get them out because but they are, they are the most, the most profitable thing that you can pull out as a, as a, as a water bottle.
You know why? They filled up in Vermont Teddy Bears, plastic bottles. I remember my Montana Teddy Bear.
But so, I mean, there's, 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 there's pros and cons with all this stuff. And, you know, and, you know, Casellas, you know, of course, is the only game in town, which is, which is fine now. I mean, they're, they're treating me fine. Actually, I spent about an hour down there today with Rich. Now it's a transfer station down there and we're talking about this. That's, I wanted to come. I have a few other things to say about, you know, some other things other than just the garbage and so forth. And they're willing to work with us, but it's going to be, you know, it's, it's, it depends on how things go, you know. But now, one of the things that he was bringing up is, you know, on the trailer parks. You've got trailers down, I know down at Birdix and some of the other places that aren't even livable. Who's going to get rid of those? How do you get rid of those? And he he came up, we, he came up with some pretty good ideas. I mean, we can discuss that, you know, later on. But if you just want to deal with the trash right now, but if you really want to clean some stuff up, some of these things have to go.
Yep.
Well, the only thing I I can say is, what I've learned in the short period of time I've been doing this is, oh, now there's the asbestos check that's going to cost thousands of dollars. It's going to cost more than the value of that structure.
Well, we we discussed.
People walk away from.
We discussed that too. You know, what he was saying, you know, the the spruces down in Williamstown after after the flood. They were then, they redid all of those. All right, so they went down there and they had a guy coming from Halifax. He'd bring two up a day. They they could, they could clear it right on their, right on their, their floor up there that they were doing these. So he said that, you know, everything was in there. They would, the guys would go through, bang, bang, bang. It's right there, you know. You're not, you're not moving this stuff. And if it came down to the asbestos, what they did with that, they have an outfit, you still have to do the environmental assessment. You know, remember I talked to you, I talked to you and Mike about that. You have to do the environmental assessment. Fine, we've got the environmental assessment. Good. Now we turn it over to Casellas. They'll bring a dumpster in, take your stuff out with a double bag, take it to New York. It won't be as expensive as what we had to pay. But we had to pay that, that we had to get a, we kind of messed up. That was, and that's probably my fault because I didn't really check on it as well as I should have. But, you know, that's the one where you got the two story one down there in North Paddle. Two story unit. But we would, we we tore that one down. I mean, the the town got it on tax out, but it had a pad and so forth. It had water, it had sewer and so forth, hookups. So, you know, we were down there and Stan Wilkinson and I went down and cleaned a bunch of the other stuff up around the outside after, after they got done with it.
Excuse me, I I I don't mean to interrupt here, but you guys are wasting my time. What's the agenda? Item that you're talking about and Mike Gardner is there as a zoning administrator. Could you get him involved in what we need to do to clean up this town? Thank you.
Is that Jim Cozes?
Probably.
Yeah.
Hey, Jeff.
Where's Mike?
Yeah, this is Tom Schue. That's what we're, that's what we're discussing, okay?
Yeah, this is an easy problem to solve.
All right, well, so I think that we should fill in the blanks on the ordinance. I and I, I, I just want to know about the legality of the flea, of, of adding a paragraph or so about, of, about flea markets, about time, time limits and flea markets and.
Yeah, but this is what Jim's saying about he's, we're not here for the flea markets. They're in the picture, but if we could start addressing this situation and when they had to see.
That's what I'm saying. The whole, that's, this is a whole long ordinance.
Sure it is.
You know, all.
This agenda.
These are all long ones. Every one of them.
Discussion property cleanup. And I believe that's what we've been doing here.
Yeah.
You know, I don't mean, I don't think we even needed to be interrupted while we were having a conversation, to be honest.
Well, that's.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we're talking about.
I know.
Not wasting anybody's time. We're having a discussion that I don't know. I don't know if I've seen a whole lot of discussions about this in the past.
Well, Jim has.
Well, he has and we all have, by how many years.
Yeah, but so what I'm saying, so will an ordinance help? I mean, at least that way you and Mike Gardner would have.
Oh, I would think definitely that would help.
Yeah. Yeah.
So so it's write an ordinance that we're going to put on the ballot?
So Michelle and I were tasked at the last meeting, or we actually volunteered to write, well, we were saying bylaws because we misunderstood, but it would be an ordinance. So it's all, it's all done. We just would fill it in and then see if we can add. Are you guys in agreement that we should add some time limits on yard sales and flea markets? If if we think that'll work to.
Well, that's. I think I think we could add that independently on the flea markets. They had to go, have a flea market, you got to go with these guys. Nelson used to say no and he asked of certain people. I know when I was on the binding board, I know Julie raised some hell about certain people got a flea market and certain people didn't. And that was pretty much left to the.
Well, I think we, what we need is a time limit on how long you can leave the junk out. We need to have rules. It's just, right now, it's too wide open.
One of the things is, is do we need to update and put those kinds of in our bylaws before they can?
Not in the bylaws.
Because you have to take the bylaws to write an ordinance if we don't have.
The bylaws are already not.
But they're, they're not clear like as to what those things that we've been discussing, that is, it's, it's a section, but it's not clearly stating all of the things that we're, we're generally been discussing right now.
Yeah.
I think we need to add some more language to that and then they can.
You first came in, you mentioned we already have it, but I think what we're doing now is upgrading.
Yeah, no, but I I think you can't, the, the way I understand it, you can't, it, it's, you don't, you can't write a bylaw that, I don't know why an ordinance would be different. This I did not understand really.
Well, I need to make some warnings.
You know what I'm saying? You can't, you can't expect, you can't, you just can't take someone's, you know, write a law about something that's been ongoing.
Do the people in Pottel care if you devalue somebody's property? I mean, that's what we're talking about, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, seriously, you don't get the right, a lot of rights we're talking about, oh, you can't do this, you can't do this. But you don't have the right to devalue somebody's property.
Well.
And that's the basic thing right there.
Yeah.
I know, but why are we skirting around it? We, we can't do this, we can't do that. So and so's got mental illness, so someone's got this and that. You can make excuses for everybody.
Yeah.
But do the people of Pottel really care about cleaning up this town? If they do, make up something. I I like, I like Arlington. Much as I, they fit us perfectly. Without a few things, you know, farm equipment.
Can you make a copy of that?
Well, you could have it. I mean, I, I read them all, Essex Junction or whatever. They're all skirt around.
It's all the same, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they mentioned trash, junk. I just don't like the idea of black bags. That to me is a trash bringing in animals.
Oh, yeah, you can't leave this.
I know you can't, but we can't, we can't, we.
They have all this stuff in there about junk cars and stuff too.
Yeah, we got junk cars. Didn't we?
Abandoned car, you know, that's, that's ridiculous.
Why, what?
That's right here, you know.
What's ridiculous?
That's in your draft.
Didn't we solve this?
No, you didn't read that.
No, 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 I I did read it. I read the whole thing. So, but I'm, it's, why is it ridiculous?
Doesn't mean that, you know, because a person hasn't used a vehicle, that doesn't mean it's worthless.
Okay, so we had this whole thing where you, the, the select board raised up the number of cars that could be.
No, we went by the state. We didn't raise it up any.
No, no.
The state is a state law.
Okay, well, yeah, that's what we're supposed to do.
And that's fine. So there's state law in this stuff.
That's what this is.
That's here. You want to get rid of the trash bags? That's good. Let's get rid of the trash bags. I, I, yes. And let's leave the other stuff alone.
We can.
I don't care if you got a rake or an old farm trash.
Hey, I totally agree with you.
I care.
I I agree with you.
Gobbage is.
You ain't my property.
No.
I've cleaned mine up. People ought to be thankful for me about it.
Hey.
That's the way it is.
People are trying.
So it's, so if we base it off of, we'll just look at trash bags. We just had trash bags. That's garbage that somebody has, should be in a dump, that somebody has thrown out or whatever case. That's what we're going to go after. So.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, he, he just left the room. He's going to come back in. For some reason, he can't. He needs himself again.
Here's the thing, what about loose stuff around that should be in a trash bag?
Well, I know, but if you can get it in a bag, you get a shot. Yeah, I know.
That's where someplace guys.
I know, I know.
That's it. That's what we're trying to do is find a place to start. What do we, what do we start on?
That's what we got to do is find a place to start.
And is, is that start, anything that we have to add to our bylaws now to to update that, to make it clear as to what we're looking at? And if so, then we can look at.
What I tried to say in the beginning is that a bylaw is, you have to take people to court to get them to follow up on it.
Now, you already know that. We already, we already beat that one to death.
Yeah.
Ordinances, we already got that.
But what I'm saying is.
Why are we messing with the bylaws then?
Got in someplace.
That's where someplace.
Because we have.
Where do you start? That to the select board.
If if we don't have something written down, I mean, we have something, yes, but we don't have, I don't think that's a hundred percent clear as to what we're talking about. It's a generalization of what we're, would want. I think we need to be more specific in that and putting in just trash bags. Or whatever that, that, that terminology would be that we're going to specifically have in our bylaws. And then that can go to select board to, in their ordinance, as this is what our bylaws say. They can approve their, the ordinance or amend the ordinance to.
We want to extend just trash bags to include upholstered items.
Household furniture, what, Mike is bad?
Overstructure mattresses, stuff like that, because that, I think they seem to be going hand in hand a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, mattresses is pretty much.
Also, you know, electronic stuff and not so much of that.
Not health, not, that's really not a.
Not a health hazard.
More of its furniture.
Yeah.
You're wondering.
What gets me is people throwing the TVs and stuff like that out in their breathe. You don't have to have a permit to do that. For fluorescent bulbs, you don't have to have that. Batteries, you don't have to have that. These are state, these are state sponsored programs. So these, these are things that are available to everybody, everybody in this, in the state of Vermont.
So is, is there a place currently within this town that that is listed that certain, these certain things are for?
I have a thing written up.
Without a permit.
Mysterious.
Yeah, I, I have, I have a thing written up about what this, what the transfer station does and so forth. And it lists all these things that you do not need a permit for certain things up there.
That's good to know and.
I, I didn't know that either.
I didn't either. I didn't know that.
But you have to pay for things like tires.
Yeah.
Sure. You got to pay for tires, yeah.
Yeah. But certain people aren't going to.
If somebody ever come pick them up, I'd be happy, you know.
I think they took 200 out of the altar trill apart. Tires.
Not sure what's happening with that. I have it on speaker here.
Let me on.
Did you close your zoom?
Does that work now, Megan?
Oh, yeah. Still echoing.
Hey, Megan.
Yep.
Let me switch laptops and try that.
Okay.
All right.
So we're looking at garbage bags. We'll have to write a specific.
As long as they're full of garbage. I know people that fill them full of leaves and put them around their foundations.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, that's, that's.
We're filling them with.
With household.
Dog VCs or cat from cleaning out their cat boxes and take them into, that's probably not a great thing to be doing either.
Really?
But I think, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. I can come in and talk to select board and find out. But I believe we would need to write something just to specify exactly what we're looking at as our bylaws so that they can change their ordinance up. Meaning they have to say, well, this is what our bylaws are showing. They can.
They don't have any ordinance at all, do they, at this point?
I don't know. You're trying to give, you're trying to give Fred and Mike some teeth.
Yeah.
I know.
You're going to say that this is a mess here.
You know, I understand that. But who's going to write the, so the, now you're saying the select board is going to write the ordinance.
We have to go through them.
We have to.
Has to go through them.
Right, we have to put something into place. We can write it out for what we want. And then we have to present that to them, saying this is what we were looking to change and how we were applying it or wanting to apply it. And then they can.
I still don't understand why, I mean, if your zoning, the zoning bylaw is, is restricted to, I mean, it's in how you enforce it and it, it hasn't been effective. So I think we just want to jump right to an ordinance.
But it's not in there, is what I'm saying.
It's not in this. What's not in there?
In the ordinance.
Bags? Oh, okay.
The ordinance that you read, or, or, I mean, our bylaws that you read, it doesn't state that the specifics that we're talking about or giving any kind of enforcement from that. So if we put that in our bylaws, then we turn that over to the select board, select board will read it and say, we approve that. It's, it's.
Do bylaws ever have enforcement?
Sure. I can read them in here and I can read them in Essex Junction.
Definitely.
You're, you're talking about ordinances. There are two distinct.
I, I know, I know. What, what do you, what do you want? What, what, what's your, what's your poison? This is always printed in ordinance. In three towns that I can pick.
You make a bylaw, then you take it to the board and then they make it an ordinance.
Yep.
That's what, that's what it sounds like to me. Is that correct?
I don't know that.
That's my understanding of it. We have to have something in place to.
What do you think, Ronnie?
Have something simple. It's only a couple of pages where a person can look at it. Rover the dump or something. What do they give you? They give you a paper, what they take.
He was on there a second ago.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, we go one of the biggest rubbish companies in America here in our town. You just don't want to talk to, you know, Armstrong. He's got some good ideas. I mean, these guys, professional rubbish people. They know where it goes, where it can go. Here we're a small town and we get more rubbish than we can stand. And here we, these guys making a fortune on the stock market. They're big. And here we, these guys making a fortune on the stock market. They're big. I've been to Lake Placid. I've seen their stuff here. I've been down Lee in the Mass Pike. They're there. They cover a lot of area.
Is this Casella?
And they're professional. Casella?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my God, Casella. Oh, they're on NASCAR, okay? Check them out sometime. They, they've got more, they've got more money than God. And they, they're good.
Yeah.
They're professionals. And here we are in this little town, stuck in a corner in Massachusetts, Vermont, whenever these guys are everywhere. They know all about that stuff. We gotta tap their goddamn brains.
That's why I went down to see Rich today.
Yeah.
Just to get some ideas. You have four games?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mike.
Now, now we got it. I just had to switch laptops. I don't know what's wrong with the, my town laptop. So I went to my own. Sorry. Um, I got a, I got a couple of things. Um, let me, let me address Megan's, um, concerns with the flea market type of situation first.
Okay.
Because I think that's a pretty simple one. That, the, the flea markets are, Megan, are pretty, pretty easy. A flea market has to go in front of the DRB in order, in order to open up. So the development review board can put on whatever guidelines and stipulations and regulations, whatever you want to call them, to a flea market type of situation. So the, the flea market in question that you're talking about on Route 7, um, they did come for a permit. The permit was denied by the DRB. Um, because it wasn't, I guess they didn't have enough information to approve the permit at the time. So I think, I think flea markets and that type of situation, you know, the DRB could say, hey, you know, you, you have a three day window to get rid of your stuff. You have whatever you want to do.
So what would they, what would the DRB base that on? An ordinance?
No, they, they base it on, a DRB is a quasi judicial board. They can base it on whatever they decide. It's totally out of my hands at that point. Somebody, somebody applies for a flea market permit or a tag sale permit or whatever. It's totally out of my hands. I send it to the development review board. And at that point, the doubt, development review board can impose whatever they so decide on that business. I mean, it, it's any business as far as that goes or anything that comes in front of the DRB, they can, they can impose their guidelines and regulations on it. Um, no matter what. I mean, that, they're, they're the final say, to be honest with you.
Yeah, but they must answer to some law or some.
Leave it, leave it, leave it like you found it. Basic. Leave it like you found it. You take, you take tanglewood, something like that. You go down there, really on the lawn. It's that way when you leave, the people leave. I've had fairs down there at the pine flies, junk left there, tag sales, junk, 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 junk.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, people are people. Good people know what to do with it. Other people don't know what to do with it. They weren't raised with it. You're trying to take people and they ask.
I wasn't raised here.
But that's about it. Ronnie, listen, people are people. You're not gonna make these people do things. The only thing they respect is some kind of authority. Ain't that. You've got a million people here from different, they don't live here all the time. They come and they go. They're transits. They don't care about Parnell. They never will. We're sitting in this room because we care. Trying to come up with something that makes sense. To mining junk is a hell of a hard thing to do.
Well, with the flea market thing, Mike, why do they base their, there must be a law. There isn't, there's no laws in place? So do we put them in?
He just sent it, sent it to the DRB.
It's, it's not about what the law is. It's about the positions that DRB has. They're able to enforce what they want to have based off of those permits they're coming in.
Yeah. They generally go to Parnell.
They can base it off, they can base it off our bylaws. You know, there's cer- certain things that are and are not allowed on, you know, in town based off our bylaws, but the DRB has, has a considerable amount of power, if you will, to impose, um, guidelines and regulations on, on anything.
Well, what you're saying about this guy, this very problematic guy on Route 7, who has for years had nothing but, but, you know.
Okay.
Left behind garbage out in that property. Uh, I hardly ever see a sale going on. It's mostly just junk sitting around moldering. And why would they even consider giving that guy a permit?
Cause you have to, but the law, he has to come before it. Listen. Sid Smithers, he was sat on the DRB, okay? Big lawyers came to the racetrack. They wanted to put on concerts, two concerts, one with 30,000 people. The laws that, the conditions that Sid put on these people by the town ordinance were perfect. I witnessed two big concerts going down, down there. The DRB, Sid was a lawyer, but he performed well. And the DRB in general performs very well. Bring the case into the DRB. Let's hear it.
Mm-hmm.
Give you some advice. Take some. But basically, I like to see people leave it like they found it.
Hmm.
It's a piece of property that you use. Don't leave mattresses like they do with the truck. Don't leave free signs. Take it away. Uh, those things the DRB can add to the permit. Conditions, conditions, always conditions.
Hey, Mike, I got, I got a question for you. What's your feelings on adding more language to the bylaws? Or do you think we should just leave it up to, uh, putting it into an ordinance?
So is what those, those trans?
Um, just, just updating our ordinance that we have. We have a small section in, in there.
Well, we have a small section in the zoning bylaws.
I, i- in our bylaws that we had just passed, or there's a small section and, but it doesn't clearly state like what we're talking about for trash bags and, or any kind of major enforcement if needed. Um, I, I, my understanding is we have to have something written in that to be able to enforce that or to go forward with doing anything else because of that. What's your feelings on it?
Well, I think, I, I, I think my, my personal opinion, I kind of side with Ronnie on this one. Um, it's really hard for, it's, it's a very simple thing to, to outline and, and put an ordinance in for household trash and garbage. Okay, that's, that's a fairly simple, straightforward thing. But if you try to, if you try to put in an ordinance or verbiage for junk, quote unquote, what, what is, what is the definition of junk? Who, who is the person who defines what junk is? Is it, is it, um, you know, the, the zoning administrator, you know, gonna come in and, and gonna say that, um, you know, this guy's got a junk refrigerator in his front yard or his backyard? Um, you know, is it gonna be the zoning administrator's position? Well, in reality, what that junk refrigerator that everybody, his neighbors don't like looking at is that guy's got a little homemade smoker set up to make his own smoked sausages or, or whatever. Because, because that, that happens, okay? I mean, um.
Right.
I, I mean, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's any of those in town, but ob- obviously I've looked into smoking my own meat, but I'm gonna do it at your smokehouse. But, um, so just using that for an example, how, who, who, who's the person who defines what junk is? Now, as far as household trash and, and black garbage bags and whatever, white garbage bags and I don't care what color they are, but if there's 25 garbage bags stacked up on somebody's house and there's rats running in and out of them, I think that if the select board and our bylaws gave the health officer and the zoning administrator some teeth, I think Fred and I would go in, you know, which happens to be who's the health administrator, health officer and zoning administrator.
Mike, I just keep saying this. I, in talking to Sid Smithers, I, and, and talking to the people at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, an ordinance would allow you and Fred to ticket people and so forth. Um, bylaw doesn't allow that. That's not what bylaws, that, so it.
That's not true. That's not true, Megan, because, because in the, in the zoning bylaws, the zoning administrator can, can impose fines and I have. I've done it. We can impose fines up to $200 a day. That's in the first part of the bylaws. I'm pretty sure.
For trash or for what, what?
Well, for, for zoning violations.
Well, that's zoning violations.
So if in the zoning bylaws, if in the zoning bylaws, trash were defined, then, then yes, the zoning administrator and health officer could go in and impose fines.
All right, that's, that's not, I think you need to talk to Sid about that.
It's in our zoning bylaws. It's in our bylaws.
How about if it was just a health ordinance? I mean, this, this is some trash. Uh, permits are gonna come to trash. It's a health ordinance.
My, my question is, my question is, as the planning commission, tonight, what are you trying to accomplish? Right? So far, we've, 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 we've kind of strayed from what you're, what you started out as and then gone into something different.
Mm-hmm.
That's because.
Because you keep asking us to bring you something. We're trying to bring you something and.
No, I understand, Jimmy. I understand.
I understand. Well, no, we all want to do something, but we don't know how to do it.
But there's a, there's.
Right, work in progress. Right.
Eventually.
What we're trying to do is, is, uh, something that hasn't been done apparently, pretty much anywhere.
I think we need to run an ordinance.
We're, we're trying to come up with something.
Um, I, I group, totally agree with you. I'm reading them.
I mean, we have a couple base ordinances that are, are out there.
They're all basically the same.
Same.
I mean, we could go through those still too and, and kind of see if there's any changes. Each town's gonna be different. Our town's different than what Arlington went through or, or any of the other ones. So.
But basically, they based it on this template, pretty much.
Well.
It looks like it to me anyway.
But I'm still feeling, I mean, when I read, read through it, there's just not a clear definition inside that. And I'm, you know, I, I, my feeling was, from what I understand bylaws to be, I, I would agree with Mike on it.
Let's figure out how to word a bylaw. Leave, leave the word junk right out of the whole thing.
Right. I think, I think we're just, like I said, just leave that word right out.
Junk has value.
Yeah, right.
None of it has to Jews down there in North Adams.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's rubbish. It's garbage.
Right. I, I don't want to be defining what junk is. I think we should stick to trash.
Leave that right out of the whole thing.
Trash.
Come up with something, maybe, you know.
Needs to go.
The idea of giving the health officer and the zoning administrator some teeth.
Play it.
Well, that's what it is.
Do you want Michelle and me to keep going with this ordinance?
Yeah.
Does everybody want, Michelle and I to keep looking at this ordinance and tinkering with it?
You'll see it. A ton of them.
You already have it.
Can you walk out to the, across from the racetrack and say, uh, you got a truckload of rubbish here? It's gonna draw some critics.
Megan, can you write one? It takes up a half a page.
[laughing]
Possible to do that?
No.
It might be.
Ye- yes, I think so.
Might be.
I mean.
It could, it could, it could be that simple for it.
Yeah, it could be.
Could be that simple.
It, it has to be, it has to be something that's that simple. We can't, we don't need, we don't need.
You don't need nine pages.
Right, we don't need that. We just want something basic that's just states.
You're right.
Trash bags are trash.
You're right. The more you start listing, the more you're gonna get into people's cut.
So we don't want all this stuff. We've got enough on abandoned vehicles.
Right. I don't believe a list. I don't think we need a list.
No.
I think we just need a description.
Yeah.
Um, it's just something that states trash bags are this and that's, that's what it is.
And I think our problem is too.
I don't care about what the metal junk is. I don't care about what all that stuff is. It's, it's.
Maybe, maybe wind up at Atkins.
Maybe something simple as saying, it's what will draw, draw in.
I burn a tractable.
I think we need to narrow our focus first. Get, get something that, that we can work on.
1955 transmission.
The idea of having teeth for, for Mike and I is, is good, but we also, what I've been wanting to address is prevention, ways to prevent it. And that's like how, get it cleaned up once, you know, go through all the pain of getting it cleaned up once and then keep it cleaned up.
Don't, don't allow it again.
Yeah.
Shoot across the bow. Find out if you, if it's there and you can't do it again.
Yep. That's where, that's where the teeth comes in.
How about this, we'll, we'll task everybody here, um, that can go on or wants to go on and try to do this. Um, write a small description, I tell you, for the next meeting. Just write a solid description of what you feel about getting rid of trashes. Everybody that wants to participate in that, write one up and.
Find it there.
We'll bring them back and we'll read through those on the next one so we can get, get an idea of what. And maybe between all those, we can, can put something together for a small description.
I, I really, speaking as a writer, that is a hell of a lousy way to get anything done.
Well, for everybody.
In a committee like.
No, I would, I would say Megan and Michelle have volunteered to do this. And I only had the question, can you do it? Can you write?
Oops, try to cut it down, but I don't think we can cut it down to half a page.
Start there and see what we get.
Two pages, baby.
Well.
Oh, look at what, I mean, how come the town of Arlington?
Went down.
Town of Arlington has.
Three pages.
Four pages.
Yeah, but a couple of us dealing with, uh.
A lot of it is you have to give a definition. You have to give, you have to define. What does abandoned mean? What is a flea, what is a flea market? What is this? What is that?
There, that's the difference. If, if an ordinance is getting written like that or we're gonna enforce some ordinance, that's, the select board is gonna be doing that part and writing, making sure that legal information's in. What I, what we're talking about here is, is having a definition for our bylaws so that they can know what we're looking at or what we put together. Then we turn that over to them to write that. We don't write any of those, uh, ordinances.
No.
So we have to just come up with some, some kind of statement, a small paragraph of something that states about the garbage that we are looking to have in it.
And then run it by the lawyer.
And then we turn that over to them. That's all we're really looking for. We don't need a whole, we don't need a breakdown in all the legal term in it. That's, that's gonna be for them to write. They could take any one of these other ones and stuff and, and base it off of one of those and, and call it Parnell's. I think we just have to make that part.
You gotta start somewhere to get something cleaned up, period.
Yep.
You can't just say, we're gonna clean the whole town up.
No, no.
No, I think just sticking with garbage.
Well, you can go ahead and maneuver around and say, hey, look, things are looking loose.
I mean, the DRB probably want some fences put around some of this stuff. That, that's a condition that you could add to things.
Right.
Simple.
Screening, I call it screening.
Some, we know, call it screening and plant trees. You put a fence up.
But, you know, people, again, if people don't have any money, they're not gonna be able to plant trees or.
They generally come to the DRB because they got money and they want to do something with it.
Right, right, right. That's the DRB.
I know, but that's, that's what Mike's saying. You should, you don't send them there.
Get over there in Arlington. That's open all summer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It's covered.
Kept clean.
Yeah. It's kept clean. It's a nice spot.
It's open on the weekend and then it's, there's nothing there when you go by on another day.
When I forget.
Yeah, that's right.
It's what you do.
And why you limit a flea market to so many days? If they can cover up the stuff.
They bring everybody up there and a lot of people go up there.
I don't believe in that limit of three days or whatever. I got a tractor I want to sell. What am I gonna stick it out there on the road for three days and then I gotta put it back in a stall for a week or a month, bring it out again? I oughta sell it.
That's, that's.
That's, that's, that's the idea of capitalism. You gotta build capitalism. Never mind the socialism. Let's stick with the capitalism.
That is really going way off.
[laughing] I guess so.
Okay, Megan, do you want to write one with Michelle? You want to get in touch with her?
We'll try.
Something to kind of word out about garbage.
But I'm gonna consult with, you know, people to find out.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to change the bylaws? I don't agree that we do. I don't, I don't think that that needs to be done, but I'll find out. Because we're talking about how do you enforce it?
Health hazards.
Mm-hmm.
Health hazards.
That's the simple part of the, of the trash thing. It's a health hazard. Come on.
Come on. That's simple. He's the guy who walks up to you with, you know, I'm not a tough guy. I'm not doing this, but you know, he got a little mess here and blah, 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 blah. And, uh, hey, what can I say?
And also, like Fred said, there's, if there's opportunities for people to get rid of some of this stuff, they ought to know about it. For nothing. If you gotta pay for that stuff, well, so what? You gotta pay for it. But you'll learn to live with it once you get it cleaned up.
Well, I like the fact you went down to the rubbish people, talked to them.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. How, how would you feel, um, like for, for one of the, any of the trailer parks have to have a permit that their people can use?
Well.
You know? I know it might be confusing, you know, because there's gotta be some kind of a proof that they're authorized to use that. But, you know, but it's not, each individual's not buying a permit.
I think, I think that the owner of the, I think that Fred, maybe what should happen here is the owner of the trailer park should come see me and then we'll, we'll do something together.
Right.
All right, how many people do you have? What are their names, the address and everything else? I mean, like I got, I got everybody's name and address and all this stuff, you know, in my computer anyhow. And I'll just make a, a, another one or just add that to it. That'll be like 800 on, you know?
Question was like, i- is that creating a burden for you guys to do it that way?
Uh, it may be. I, I, I'll have to really think about it. And I'm gonna have to talk to Ron about it too. But, but, you know, yeah, I mean, anything like that's definitely gonna create somewhat of a burden.
Yeah.
Now.
I have one, I have a comment on that one, Fred, actually.
Yep.
Um, I, I think, I think it's a great idea on the surface. And, and I really and truly do, um, to give, to give a discounted, um, somehow discount it for, for the trailer parks in town. My problem, my, the plain devil's advocate, my problem with that is, what do we do with the person or, or a group of people in a trailer park who are running their, uh, uh, pickup business where they go around and clean up, you know, clean up people's yards for, for a business? But yet they're a resident of, and I'm just gonna throw it out there because the name already popped up earlier, Alta Gardens. If they're a resident of Alta Gardens, but they're, they're running a home cleanup business where they come in and clean up your yard, how does, how do we put that burden onto Tom and, and Ron? To, to differentiate between what they generated to their house and what they generate as a business?
Yeah, well, I think the, the purpose, what I was thinking is to take, to take some of that, you know, for, for, for example, a trailer park that has low resources, um, to be able to, to, to live up to those standards of the bylaw where they're responsible for getting rid of the stuff. Um, a creative way for them to do it, but they need to super, they need to be involved in supervising that. There, there needs to be a set, an expected amount of volume per week coming from that trailer park not to exceed that.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. I don't disagree with you. I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I, I totally agree with that, especially on the limited, the limited resources. You know, but, but that, my question is, you know, there's, there's a, there's a, there's one across from Jimmy's store that runs, you know, a little recycling, I don't know if you wanna call it a recycling business or whatever they, whatever they're running. Um, which, which unfortunately, as a zoning minister, there's not a lot I can do about it because they kind of don't do it there. I've, I've kind of been keeping an eye on it. But what do they, you know, all of a sudden they're bringing, you know, we give them that reduced rate and they're bringing all kinds of stuff into town over to, over to the transfer station. I, I, it's just plain devil's advocate, that's all.
No, that's a good, it's, it's all a good point, Mike. So, you know, I didn't even, that didn't even cross my mind, but because, because always gonna be somebody who's gonna try to do something.
We know that.
Oh, yeah.
Here, here, here's the thing, Mike. I, I think I know of whom you're speaking. Uh, you know, the, the, he does bring things up there and so forth and, but he's getting paid by the owner of the, the trailer park and stuff. But, uh, the thing of it is, I think that if we're gonna do something like this, you know, I mean, this is just coming off the top of my head right now. I, I'm gonna have to think about this a lot more. But the people who, who gets this permit have to bring the stuff up themselves. You know, you can't say, oh, I'll bring it up for him. No, 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 it's not gonna happen. You bring it up, you bring it up there, uh, we'll, we'll say, okay, fine.
Or have a designated person that.
They're under, they're police.
If they can't, they can't do it. But I don't want this one individual bringing up a bunch of stuff because I know that it would be abused. You know, I mean, he, he pays, pays, you know, good money because.
That's, that's my point, Tom. My, my point is, my point is, I don't have the problem, I don't have a problem with John Smith, who's running this, his little business. He's bringing his stuff in and he's paying the same exact rate that Ronnie and I are paying, you know, to bring in, to bring in whatever we're bringing in. But if we're giving them a reduced rate and he, and he's bringing in stuff that he's making money off, that's, that's where I have the problem. That's, that's where I see a potential problem coming in for sure.
Yeah. Like I, like I said, Mike, it's something we're gonna have to, I'll have to really think about. I mean, uh, we had somebody that was in a position of power here a few years ago bringing up something like that. And we tried to discuss it and it, it just never really caught on right. I mean, now, like I said, if the trailer park owner is gonna do some of this, maybe, maybe he could subsidize part of it, you know, to keep his trailer park clean. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I think you're absolutely right, Tom.
If you had a trailer park, you would do that. I would do that.
You own, yes.
I'll tell you what, my, my next door neighbor back in Pennsylvania had a trailer park. And he had 490 spots is the last I heard. And there's not a bit of trash in any of it.
Yeah, like.
Over here, you don't have any.
Oh, no, you don't have anything over there. None of the Lamens have a beautiful, beautiful place over there.
Yep.
So what it is, is, you know, it's, you gotta get.
Get a clientele.
Exactly. You gotta get to the, the trailer park owners. You know, but then down in Burnix, nobody owns it. So, so there we are. We're, we're, we're lost there right now.
Well, she's trying, but we'll see.
All right, so I'm gonna move this along a little bit. We've discussed quite a bit of it. I think we can, like I said, look into something like that. It's a small thing to write up so we can kind of discuss that again and we'll see what we got there.
You're on the range.
Um, and then moving on to, uh, public comment. Thanks again, Mike.
Well, I think, I think Jim Close has his hand up forever, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We're into public comment time now. Is still there?
Jim? Yeah. Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hey, first of all, I mean, I, I give you guys 150% credit. I'm trying to come up with something. This has been going on for many, many years and Jim Winchester and I have had discussions and how to do it. And no, there, there is, may not be one answer out there. But I, I've gotta just ask you to, I challenge you, take the town of Arlington's junk ordinance, okay? And instead of us trying to recreate something from ground zero, take, I'd like to see you take that one and subtract or edit it in such a way that it's not an ordinance, all right? It, first of all, it has to give Mike and to give Fred teeth, is that it has definitions. What does abandonment mean? What does enforcement mean? What's a highway? What is junk? What is, and I'm going down junk motor vehicle, all right? It defines everything that's in discussion, all right? Next is, there's only three items that they're talking about. Number one, the first one, A, is place discard junk vehicles within the, uh, vision of the road, all right? It just is saying that it's, it's a public nuisance. We're not gonna stop them from doing what they're doing. We're gonna stop them from making it visible from the road, thereby declared to be a public nuisance. It should be just put behind fences. Item number B, the same thing, except they're putting junk on another person's property. Well, all the trailers are on someone else's property. Though number B is explaining that you can't put that stuff on someone else's because it's declared to be a public nuisance. The bottom line here is, I think we're not trying to stop people from having their trash, our trash or their trash, which could be their treasures. Let's turn the wheel around and say, let's stop them from having their trash, which is their treasures, as visible from the road, which is a public nuisance. And then the, the next one is wishing to, if you wanna have a junkyard within the town of Pownal, you require a certificate. Look at the area or not, a, a location over on Jackson Cross Road. Is that a junkyard or is that a landfill? Or is that you? I need zoning administrator to explain what that is happening over there. That is the basic thing in the whole ordinance from Arlington. It's not asking much at all. And then it goes down to enforcement and penalties. And that's the teeth that Fred and Mike need. Now, whether it's you guys that can put it up or someone else has to put it up, let's just get it to the select board to see what they can do. Now, I only have one other thing. I, I heard Mike say, and I, I really, I wish I could find it. Somewhere that, um, tag sale people need to get a permission to do their flea market or whatever. Is there somewhere written that they need to get a permit? I didn't hear that there was, but it basically somehow got to the D R B. Whether there is something written, and that's what I'd like to, someone to tell me, where is it written that they need to get a permit and go to the D R B?
Change of use. Change of use.
Good. It's a, it's a, uh, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Um, I can answer that a little bit, I think. Um, that's, when it goes to the D R B, that's because they needed a permit to put it in place. It's a, uh, it's a use permit that they applied for.
Okay, so it, it's the use per- permit?
Yes.
Okay, so in the use permit, what is the definition of use permit?
I, uh, wanna add on to my store, uh, a cooler. I went to the D R B for that. Several things I've done at the store, just to change something, had to go to the D R B.
But does that say, is that in the bylaws?
Apparently it is. I, I, it's been going on for years since I've been here.
All right, I just want to make sure, or are you just being a conscientiousness storekeeper?
No, I, I, I know all the zoning administrators and, uh, you, hey, I've dealt with, uh, four or five of them.
Okay, I don't wanna get off the track. The bottom line, I, I challenge you, take the Arlington and work it backwards versus trying to create your own and working it for.
Well, Jim, we have the, the template that Arlington came, was made from, so, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll get it down. We'll handle it.
Okay, thank you. That was a nice, that was a nice.
We don't want it only to be about junk.
No, no, no.
Right.
We want it to be about garbage.
It's gotta be about garbage too, so.
I don't know, can we?
Yeah.
Can we put?
Thank you, Jim.
Can we, and do an end run about, around that lousy looking so-called flea market? I'd like to know.
Hey, we've, we stopped him. He, he needs to come back, okay? He hasn't come back yet.
That's all he has to do is fill something else in. And he'll, and what else can you, can we, you know?
Well, we're, we're not.
I think we need to have a time limits on these things. I'm sure that Wilmington has time limits in that flea market up there.
We can't target, we're not targeting specific things. We're trying to generalize.
No, I know, right. That's right.
Mike's got something to say.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, so it, this is, this is just what I'm gonna tell you, um, my suggestions, okay? Coming from both the zoning administrator and from sitting on the select board. I think if you're, if you're gonna write an ordinance of, of any sort right now, or gonna, gonna try to write something, I think you need to keep it as simple as you can. I think you need to stay on, on task. And I, I think you, I don't think you wanna be, um, as broad as what you're trying to accomplish in, in the discussion I heard tonight. I think if you focus on one thing at a time, I think it's gonna go a lot farther. And, and once again, please, this is just my opinion. I, I think if you focus on your trash, I think, I think that's where we start and give, and give Fred and I some, some authority. Um, I think as far as flea markets and that kind of stuff, there are, there are, um, provisions, the, the use matrix, um, table in the, in the, um, bylaws state. But, you know, I, I don't have it in front of me and I, I don't have time to read it right now either. But, um, there, there are provisions in the bylaws for, excuse me, things such as flea markets. I think that's where we have to trust our D R B members to impose whatever guidelines and stipulations and, and conditions and everything else on, on the person who's operating a flea market or, or, or whatever business or, or whatever.
Well, we've trusted them so far and look at that matchup.
That's what I'm saying. Megan, that's exactly what I'm saying. I, I'm, I'm thinking that, that as far as the planning commission or anybody for that matter, they're trying to put it onto the select board, I, I think we need to trust our D R B as far as the, as a flea market. I think our D R B did an outstanding job when, when that person came to us for, for, came to them, excuse me. I mean, they give me the permit, um, but I, you know, I try to sit in on those public hearings for the D R B when there's something there because if they have a question, I wanna be able to answer it. I think they did an outstanding job in, in what they did there.